Seventh, two thousand and thirteen. If we could please stand, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first order of business tonight is, has been after an election, so we're gonna do a reorganization. And...
Turn that over to the vice chair.
We'll turn that over to the vice chair.
Okay. I'd like to start by taking some nominations for the chair, for the planning board.
Ms. Vice Chair, I'd like to nominate Bruce Mackey as the chairman.
Second.
I agree. I would like to nominate you also. So, I have your nomination, and I have a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Bruce.
Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you. It wouldn't all be possible without all the help of everybody else that's here, that's for sure. All right.
Now you have to elect a vice chairman and secretary.
All right, now we're gonna go on, and we'll elect a vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Rose Marie Hanlon as vice chairman again. I thought she did a great job last year.
Second. We have a... A... In a second, so...
A nomination.
Nomination in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. But thank you, I accept. I couldn't have done an outstanding job without all of my colleagues here helping me also.
Even with one arm, huh?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate our newest member as our secretary.
And I'd like to second that.
Just to warn Kevin, this is only...
In case.
Absolutely no one to take minutes.
Good mother-in-law.
Have to do that.
I see.
Welcome to the pod.
Bob knows all about it.
Do I hear a second? Was there a second?
I did. I seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Kevin.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations on the election, too.
Yes, definitely.
Yes, congratulations on the election.
Okay.
All right, now we'll go on to new business. We have a, first thing is a sign permit for Tan's Gourmet on eighty Main Street.
I am very happy to say that Tan's Gourmet, they've been trying to get opened. Tan, Grant, would you just use that mic? Push that mic over.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. This is Grant from Excel Signs representing Tan's, and initially, they just wanna do a sign of both new business, and I'll let him explain.
Thank you, Jack. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Again, my name is Grant Gow. I'm from Excel Signs, and tonight we're representing Tan's Gourmet. So, Jack, did you retract the...
Yes, if you'll see in your... Thank you, Grant. You'll see a copy of what the sign would look like. You'll also see the calculations, and I put the calculations of the wall, what the square footage of the wall is, what the square footage of the sign is, and what the ratio is. And Grant was correct, and then you'll see on your last thing that a sign wall is incorporated onto the wall, obviously, and there was supposed to be something else in here, but it's all right. And under this... Oh, it's double sided, sorry. That's all right. Yours is. Okay, and then you'll see that ten percent of the wall can be used for a sign.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the sign would be made out of half-inch-thick PVC, be cut out of, cut off from the router, and the, in terms of the lighting, you, we're gonna continue using the overhead spotlights that's already there. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
No, I'm also.
My only comment before Mrs. Hanlon goes is that we haven't seen many of these wall signs. This is one of the few we use. Usually, they're hanging over or whatever, and it's a different criteria, but Grant made me aware that this is a little different. And they may come back with another sign they're talking about on the directory.
Yeah, in the future, the pylon directory sign, in the future.
The one they want is too big, but they weren't prepared to go through the special permit process with us yet.
At least they can get open first for this sign.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
And how do you secure this sign onto the wall?
These letters, each letter's gonna have three or more metal pins screw on the, to the back of the letters, and we're gonna drill holes based on the patterns they were produced, and drill the same holes on the wall, and we insert it into the wall and adhere with silicone inside the holes.
Are they gonna be secured to two-by-four or metal studing, or into the vinyl siding?
Actually, gonna, the pins are much longer than the vinyl siding itself. It's about two inches protruding into the building. What happened is the, not every letter's gonna have the opportunity to be directly in front of the stud, so we actually use, what shall I call it, the knots to secure it from the inside, so make sure it's tightly secured.
It's like a toggle ball.
Toggle, okay. I just don't wanna see them fall down.
Did you have a question, Rose Marie?
Well, that was one of them. Kevin just asked it that. My other one is the T. The T looks so much bigger than the A and S. Is it the dimensions within?
He's showing you the calculations, yes.
If you look at the wall area calculation drawing, this one here, basically, what I drew is a layout of the vinyl siding and the window, basically the wall, except the shingle roof. So, that lists out the different parts of the, of the wall, and how large they are. On the bottom of the drawing, there should be calculations of the wall area versus signage area, and the ratio is nine percent.
Okay, thank you.
Will, did you have a...
I did have just a couple more questions. On the, on the, on the photograph set that you gave us, is there pre-existing goose-neck lighting there now, or is the lighting already there?
Yeah, it looks like it.
I can't remember.
It looks like it is, well, from the existing picture here.
I just wanna make sure it wasn't an overlap, and they needed an permit.
I, I thought the same thing, but it looks as, it is there.
Yeah. The landlord actually installed it previously.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign for Tan's Gourmet with the following conditions: You'll need a building permit. That's it? That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Did you bring a menu?
Actually, I submitted last time I was here, but if, if there, if I, you know, need to streamline the process, I can submit another one another day.
He missed that.
Thank you.
You want the menu? A restaurant menu.
Oh, the menu? I thought that very...
They're hungry.
I, I'll have the owner deliver one.
So, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
When do you plan on opening? A lot of people are asking me.
The, actually, I spoke to the owner last week. I think they're wrapping up on the renovation. I think that they're, they're trying to, trying to open by the end of the month.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good night.
Grant?
Yes.
Make sure the owner knows that anytime after nine o'clock tomorrow, you can pick this permit up, and you'll need to get a building permit, obviously, to construct this.
Let's have coast construction, chair.
All right. Next, under new business, is a receipt of plans for South Coast Construction, special permit to exceed signed dimensions.
Yes, this is for New England Farms. This is the gas station down in Delta that's now in front of you as a special permit, but they also, now that they've made some headway with the Conservation Commission, they're confident that they can get this done, and they would like to move forward with their permit application, and so we need to schedule a public hearing. June fourth. Pat, hold on. At seven fifteen.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to set the public hearing for the South Coastal Construction for June fourth at seven fifteen.
Have a second?
Second.
Have motion, a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, under old business, and it is after seven fifteen, we have a public hearing for proposed zoning amendments, changes to definitions and accessory apartments by citizens' petition.
Do you have the public hearing notice in the back?
Town of Kava Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, the town of Kava will hold a public hearing pursuant to GLC four A S five on May seventh, two thousand and thirteen, at seven fifteen PM at the Kava Town Hall, Meeting Room One. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on proposed changes to the Kava zoning bylaws. The proposed amendments include changes to the following sections: Section twenty-two sixty of Article Two, definitions in Articles Six, and in a new section forty-nine fifty of Article Four. The intent of these zoning amendments is to modify the accessory apartments bylaw and establish a one-year moratorium on medical marijuana... Oh, wait a minute, is this the...
Yeah, it's the right one.
And, okay, to modify the accessory apartments bylaw and establish a one-year moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers. A copy of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is on file at the town clerk's office and may be inspected during normal business hours. Any person interested and wishing to be heard on the proposed changes should appear at the time and place designated. Bruce Mackey, Chair, Kava Planning Board. Published dates, April nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and April twenty-sixth, two thousand and thirteen.
Mr. Chair, there's technically three bylaw changes, and I was wrong when I told you earlier the medical marijuana is on the agenda tonight. I got mixed up with the math change, so...
Oh, okay.
So, we're hearing two citizens' petitions by Mr. Belvin, and then the medical marijuana.
Great.
And they're in your packet. Everything is in your packet.
Okay, so we'll go on with Mr. Belvin.
Which one, which would you like to go first, family dwelling addition or the definitions?
I gave him the family dwelling addition first, just in their packet.
Can, actually, can we switch? Can we do the definitions first, because it'll kinda help out a little bit with the other one? Mr. Chairman, is that right? We go through the definitions?
Yes.
If we go through the definitions first?
Sure.
I think that'll help. These, I looked at our definitions that we have in our town bylaws, and these are my suggestions to town meeting and to this board. The first one is to change the definition of accessory apartment, shall mean a dwelling unit located in or attached to an existing single-family home in accordance with the provisions of Section twenty-two sixty herein, and the most important part is not to be considered a two-family home. Okay? That's to really put it in place to really restrict the point of single-family residence as a single-family residence. That's the first one. The next one is to add bathroom facilities, a sink with plumbing, toilet, a shower stall, or a bathtub with shower capabilities. Pretty self-explanatory. Next one is dwelling unit. This is a change. Shall mean a building or part of a building occupied or suitable for occupancy as a residence and arranged for the use of one or more individuals living together with kitchen facilities, living, bathroom facilities, and sleeping facilities. Basically, to standardize what is actually included in a dwelling. The next one is dwelling two-family. Has to remove that, because it's actually, it's covered under another pot, which is the next one, is duplex or two-family dwelling. It's just a duplicate, bottom line is. And that one is a building containing two dwelling units attached or within a dwelling with separate electrical meters, excluding single-family with accessory apartments or family dwelling additions. The big thing with this is separate utilities, since we mostly have, with most houses, we have well water in this town, so then you have just one well. Heating systems, most of them have one heating systems, but if you're gonna have a duplex or a two-family, you should have separate. And the big thing is the separate electrical meters. That really says, this is two separate distinct dwellings here. The next one is, an important one, is definition of family, and this is what I wrote up, is shall be defined as individuals related by blood, marriage, or adoption. That's one unit. The next one would be up to six unrelated individuals cohabitating together due to a handicap status. That'd be another section, and then the third one would be two adults cohabitating together, including their blood or adoptive relatives. That would be the third. And all of them would be, in order to provide for the activities of daily living, provide spiritual, financial, and mutual support. That last, it's pretty much a, a new definition for family. Right now, it's, in our bylaws, it states a number of individuals living together with cooking, bathing, and something like that. And that really isn't really what a family is. So, I tried to blend it in, and I've used case law to support this. The only thing that's different is where it says two adults cohabitating together. I've done research for other towns, and the family definition is really a huge spectrum out there of what the definition could be. Some are, don't even define family. That's how they get out of it. We're not gonna define a family. Other ones have restricted it similar to ours, of saying it could be anybody, could be a family together. This kind of really sets in place, and with this definition, it guides the zoning board of what a family is, so they, interpretation of it, it leaves less to interpretation. As a zoning board member once said to an applicant is that this, this addition is just for nuclear family. That's what was stated at one, one of the cases, and I, I didn't like that, and it's even in the Supreme Court has actually said that family is anybody related by blood, marriage, adoption, all right, and that's the, that's the cornerstone of our country, and that's what I wanted to put in here. The idea of up to six unrelated individuals cohabiting together due to a handicap status goes to group homes. You could have a number of handicapped people living in one group home. We have them here in this town. It provides a limitation of how many could actually be in that as a family, because anything more, you could turn around and say it was a rooming house. We really don't want rooming houses in our single-family area. So, the family definition here really constricts it to a point of what it really is.
Actually, Bob, I'm, Spelman, I have a question.
Sure.
All right, the marriage, blood, or adopted. All right, say you have your in-laws living with you, and you get divorced.
Yeah.
What happens there? Because technically, you're not related to them through marriage anymore.
That's a family issue. That's a family issue to deal with family. It's not a town issue.
Oh, no, I'm just asking. Just a question.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a family issue that will have to be dealt with a family.
No, just a question.
All right, so, I mean, this definition here is just based on family through the town, all right? Issues of that can be discussed, something else, but like I said, that would be a family issue that would have to be dealt with family. Okay?
Just a question.
No, that's fine. The next one is single-family home, a single dwelling unit used for family, and can include multiple kitchen facilities utilizing one electrical meter. This kinda goes after a case law that, and the idea is this, is that a single-family home, there's nothing restricting you to have two kitchens in a single-family home. There's no building code that can say you can't have two kitchens in a single-family home. If you do religious purposes, you could say someone who is Jewish that wants a kosher kitchen, and they want a regular kitchen, so you have two separate kitchens in a single-family home. This provides it without having to go to any zoning, because the bottom line is, you can have it by law, all right? And it doesn't make it two dwelling units, and that's what Ernest J. Block via the town of Edgerton pretty much said. He said, "You can have." He wanted three kitchens in his house. It's still a single-family home, he's got three kitchens in his house. That's what I put in there. And the last one is single-family dwelling addition, and that's what the next bylaw will look at: In addition to a single-family home for the exclusive use of family, not to be used for non-family or considered an accessory apartment. That would be a new definition. And it only, these definitions, like I said, we can talk about at town meeting and discuss it, and please discuss it here. I mean, I wanna talk, we wanna listen, we wanna get this out, and everyone's gonna have a different opinion on the subject, and I wanna hear those from you guys, what your opinions are for this.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'm good for now, Mr. Chair, thank you.
I'll start, if you want, Mr. Chair. I'll go right down the list. I mean, the first one, accessory apartments, not to be considered a two-family. I know where Bob's going with this. Right or wrong, I have no idea what's right or wrong. The assessors consider an accessory dwelling, a house with an accessory dwelling unit as a two-family. I don't know if that's an assessor code or whatever. So, I, I don't know if this is good or bad. I have no other opinion other than that. I know the assessors do that. Bathroom facilities is dictated by building code. I don't think zoning should be going inside a house and telling people what a bathroom or kitchen facilities are. The dwelling unit is different than what you have today, and essentially, the difference that Bob put in is about kitchen facilities, but it is not much different. The two-family, again, is very similar to what you have for your two-family, except, again, we get into the electrical meters and that we are excluding single-family with accessory apartments. I, you know, I have no opinion either way on that yet. The next one is, in my opinion, you are violating Supreme Court decisions up and down zoning. You cannot, cannot, and I'm gonna strongly advise you not to go down what about families and what families constitute. Supreme Court has decided many, many, many times in zoning that you cannot dictate what a family is. Single-family, the Block decision, he's absolutely right, very famous zoning case, that you can have as many kitchen facilities as you want. And then, and then both of these, the single-family and the family, as you see Bob has put in, revert back to the definition of family. So, in my opinion, some of this is fine, some of it I may disagree, but this definition of family, you are treading on a very dangerous ground.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Jack.
What else, does anybody else have any questions?
Right now, I would, I personally would have to take this under advisement, and I would have to do tons and tons of research on this before I would be comfortable even just making any statements or discussing anything.
Is it possible that, that we could have legal advice on this, or take a look at the legalities of this?
I'd also like to, well, I was gonna say I'd like to pass it by the building.
Well, I was, I was gonna say the same thing, you know, do we have the opportunity to do that?
Yeah. You can, you know, once you're done with, with listening, we can, you can continue it to the twenty-first, and I can get you what I think I can get you, either both legal and the building commission. And maybe the board of health, I don't know if maybe.
Okay, yeah, good.
Maybe even the electrical and plumbing inspector.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's a good idea.
Go ahead, Bob.
Just a rebut, um... Well, Mr.?
Jack.
Jack, sorry. Under dwelling unit, when he said that the difference is kitchen facilities, what the bylaw says, it says cooking.
Right.
All right, and the, when you say cooking, what does that mean? All right, because you can cook in a...
Hot plate.
A hot plate. You can cook on an iron, you can cook on, so there's different things, it's, by putting kitchen facilities, it really states in place of what it is, because we have a definition of kitchen facilities in our bylaws now of what it says, so this kinda includes it in. The bathroom facilities, it actually comes out, and Jack kinda hit the nail on the head a little bit here, is that with the board of health, is that under the health and safety guidelines of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it, and the Secretary of State's office comes out with dwellings, it actually says that every dwelling unit must have, that's gonna be habitated, has to have kitchen facilities, bathing facilities, and all these other things, that you have to have so many doors, windows, sites of line and whatnot for it. So, there are other laws that preclude it, but it doesn't state it in here, and there's some confusion, I think, that needs to be resolved, and I think if we give guidance to the zoning board, 'cause that's who's gonna be looking at these, that's all these are the guidelines, to turn around and see for that issue. The next one about family, and Jack is right, there are some trouble with trying to develop what a family is. The cornerstones of what the Supreme Court has said is that family is blood, marriage, or adoption. That's the cornerstone of family, and it goes back to when the settlers first came here, that they brought their family members here, and they all lived in one house, and you'd have a mother, a father, the children, the grandparents in there, then you'd have the, the children's husbands there with their kids, so I mean, and all the definition is, this puts in place some limitations of what it is. There are alternate means, like I said, there's so many different, I had a whole list of them, and I did forget to bring them in, of different towns' definition of what family is. If this goes through and it goes to the Attorney General's Office, they'll turn around and take a look at it, if it gets passed, or it doesn't get, if it gets passed, then they'll look at it, they'll see, is this right? Okay, if they find that it's wrong, then basically that the old is back in there. But to turn around and look at what our definition is now, it could be any number of individuals living, cooking, and my thing is there is that this sets in place, when it says activities of daily living, under the healthcare, what we talk about activities of daily living, that's everything from cooking, cleaning, bathing, everything, getting dressed, that's what you're doing in a house. That's what you're doing in, as a family, is making sure that this is all done. So, that's why I say activities of daily living. I took the whole idea of, of kitchen and bathing and whatnot, and really put it in the sense of, family is these people doing this, these activities here. That's for that. Otherwise, I'm done.
Can I, yes and no. The definition of family, Bob's probably correct, but what Bob's doing is using that definition in a single-family home, and what a family dwelling addition is. So, therefore, the Supreme Court is clear, can't define who lives in a home, and Bob's doing that by the definition of family and incorporating it in a single-family home. It's a roundabout way of doing something I think that is a slippery slope. It's a roundabout way of doing something I think that is a slippery slope.
Well, we'll look at that. Uh, what else do you have for us tonight?
All right, the next one is, um, family dwelling addition, okay? Um, and this is what I tried to do is not change our bylaws with the accessory apartment, but to expand to the extent of family, um, being able to put an addition on for your family. Uh, and this is clearly the cornerstone of what I just explained to you about family, of people coming together as a family, bringing their grandparents in, bringing their son-in-laws in, living in their house as a family. This gives an extra space in the house, separate from an accessory apartment. And I'll read this for the public, too. Family dwelling addition. "In addition to a single family home for the exclusive use of family, blood, marriage, or adoption, to include kitchen facilities, bathing facilities, living and sleeping space, not to be used for non-family or considered an accessory apartment." And this is a by right use. Now, by being a by right use, the people that wanna put an addition to their house for their in-laws or for their sister or their brother, um, or their kids and their kids because of having a house foreclosed, and I've seen this a lot, where families are now stuck with, the parents are now taking care of the kids again and their kids because of the foreclosure situations that we have, that this will provide an opportunity, whereas you don't have to go through the zoning board. You don't have to, you go to the building inspector, you say, "I want a building permit for a family addition." All right? Therefore, you don't have to go to them and pay the money to put the permit in for the zoning board. You don't have to pay for all the mailings. You don't have to pay for all the plans. You don't have to pay for, um, going before them. And then even further that, uh, every three years, you have to get it renewed. Every three years, you have to get it. There's even one where they're supposed to go every year and get theirs renewed for an accessory apartment. This would bypass that process, okay? There would be some stipulations and under the conditions here that I did write. And this is to go back to the single family home idea is not to be used for non-family rentals. Non-family, period. We don't want it as a separate, um, uh, apartments. Okay? We just want it for family. The next one is only one electrical meter. All right? Like I said, it goes back to two electrical meters could be two separate dwelling units. And we don't want that. We want it just for families, that's it. No two-family homes. Must be unrestricted access to all areas of a single family home. Now unrestricted access, what I'm meaning here is that you can walk from one side of the house to the other side of the house without a locked door. That's my intention for this. Meaning that you can have a doorway there, similar to a split family home, where you wanna put a family addition on the basement, which there's a number of them here in the town, that there's a doorway to keep heat from going up and down, all right? But it's not locked, okay? Or you have two doors like mine, all right? There's no locks on the doors, but that's just to keep the heat in, all right? But you can still walk from one area to the next, okay? That's what I mean by unrestricted. There's no fire-rated door, there's no lock on that door. It's the inside of your house. And under chapter forty-eight, it does say, uh, chapter forty-eight, section three, zoning cannot regulate the interior of a single family home. And that's the laws. But they can regulate, and I wrote this out, bulk, the height, the yard size, lot acreage, um, light lot area, setbacks, open space, parking and building, coverage. And we do that through our setbacks in our town. We do that through the dimensions, regulations in our town. Meaning that you have, cannot build a house from the frontage of your property fifty feet in. That's where you can start. Onside, it's thirty, I think it's thirty-five feet, for sides. Back is fifty feet. So anywhere in there, you can build. And if someone has two, three, or four acres of land and they wanna put an addition, and a big addition to their house, if they meet those criterias of the setbacks and they can build it, then they should be allowed to build it. All right? And if they wanna build it for living area for their family members, they should be allowed to without being regulated. That's the purpose of that. Um, not to be considered a two-family home. Again, you put a locked door, you put a, um, a fire-rated door in between the two separate areas, or you even block it off totally, then you're talking a two-family home. And that's not the intent. The intent here is for family. And, uh, cannot be converted to a fa- to a family home. Make it clear, we don't want it to be a two-family home. That's not the intent. The last part here, which is a contingency basis, is if the property owner wishes to use the family dwelling addition for non-family, he must go before the ZBA for a change of use to the, to an accessory apartment. That's not saying they're gonna be allowed to. The zoning board then has the right to go ahead and issue conditions, could say that they need to limit the space. They can go ahead because now you've crossed the line from it being family to being non-family. Um, to go along with this, the, um, every accessory apartment that I went through in the building and the zoning for this town, every single one has been for family members. I have yet to find one that was done for non-family members. And some of the people that have come before, they have been limited in size. They have been, um, and has not been followed properly. But what I'm here doing now is giving an option for the residents, okay? That they can do it without being, um, criticized of what they're doing and how they're doing it for their family members. It's all about your family. Like I said, even our town master plan that was developed, it is, it's encouraging this type of development, all right? As an alternative, okay? The whole idea of this is to bring back, chapter forty-eight, section three, it says zoning can't regulate the interior of a single family home. If you wanna have your in-laws live there and you wanna have two kitchens, you should be allowed to not be regulated. That's the whole intent of this. Thank you.
Uh, if you have anything additional to say, Jack, uh?
Well, you know, I just wrote down that, uh, I think we should also ask the assessors to look at this, you know? Bob is right. You can't, you know, and we've talked about this in many permits, you can't, um, restrict the interior of the house. But the irony is, and this happens in the existing zoning throughout the Commonwealth, we do though, don't we? 'Cause we're talking about kitchens, we're talking about bathrooms, we're talking about living space. So, eh, eh, you know, it leaks out every once in a while. Um, I, my biggest fear about what Bob wrote is the potential abuse of, um, it, it's kinda like a backdoor way of doing an accessory unit, without it being an accessory unit, kind of, sort of. I mean, it looks like one, it acts like one. He's just not calling it one.
But with any of these, um, Jack, you would have to have the building inspector there, you'd have to have the plumbing inspector there.
You would anyway.
You would anyhow. You can't, you couldn't get insurance if you were putting in a kitchen with the stove unless you had the, the plumbing inspector there. So you do have to come down and get permits.
Yeah. I, I, it's this whole non-family thing that you're gonna run into, the town's gonna run into it. Everybody in the country has run into this and everyone's tried different ways to get around it.
You don't need to go to zoning if you build within the dimensions that they're allowing you to build. The only time you need to go to zoning if you wanna make it larger than what?
Eight hundred square feet.
Eight hu- yeah.
Well, that's, well, Bob, Bob is eliminated, or not eliminated, has gotten around that. It, it's an accessory apartment, in my opinion, that's not called one. And I think Bob's trying to dictate, and maybe you can, I, I don't know if you can or not, through zoning, what the, how the assessors assess it. And I don't know if he can even do that.
Right.
I mean, I was surprised, I have to admit, I don't know if Bob told me or somebody else, that they were assessing, uh, I mean, uh, yeah, assessing accessory apartments as two-family. I didn't even know they did that.
I can bring some light to that. Zoning and assessing are basically two separate, distinct areas, okay? Assessing is they're assessing for what's there on that property. The assessing department has criterias under the state law that says that you have a single family home or you're a two-family home. There's no, eh, no two ways about it. But what the assessing has, they have definitions that they have created as a single family with what they call an in-law, all right? But there's, then there's a definition for two-family. And I can tell you with me, they have me as a single family with an in-law. I disagree that. I challenge it through the abatement process and that will go through wherever they decide. Um, but another property who has an accessory apartment, they have dictated them as a two-family home. But they're an accessory apartment through zoning. So we're talking two separate things. We have zoning, basically, that's about, um, building and use issues. The other ones are about taxation. And what we're talking about here is building and use. We're not talking about taxation. That should actually be kept out of the situation because we're only talking about this. How you're taxed is totally separate. Because the assessing can't tell zoning what to do and zoning can't tell assessing what to do. That's why we have a zoning board here and we have an assessing board here.
But at some place, they need to meet.
That's the problem, they don't meet.
But they need to, you have to assess.
So, but, but Bob, why, why are you saying not to be considered a two-family then, if, if you don't care?
No, it's because you need to have that separation from a single family to a two-family. Because most residential areas, you're looking at as a single family home.
Called an accessory apartment?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Because then you go by the zoning board regulating you or what you're doing to your single family home.
If it's over eight hundred square feet.
Right, but why if you have six, if you have a three-acre lot and you have fifty feet setback from the front, thirty-five from the side, and fifty from the back, and then you want to have a big, and even in this case of the Ernest Block, an ostentatious house, okay? Where part of that is for living area, okay? Why should you be regulated on the inside of your house?
So then why don't you try to get rid of the eight hundred square feet instead of doing this?
I have tried that here and, and...
Point, I think town meetings told you they don't want that.
Right.
So why would they want this?
Because the issue here is, I have many people that will come up and speak, hopefully this time, that will say of what they've been through going before this, of what the limitations that they've had and what they've had to go through.
So then why not try to go back and eliminate the eight hundred square feet? If you have testimony?
Tried that last year and it didn't work, so I figured I'd try something different this year.
I think you've tried it two years in a row and it didn't work.
I, it seems like that's what you're doing, Bob. Eh, you know, eh, eh, it is, it's an acc- it looks like an accessory apartment and acts like one. The only difference, other than some language, is that it's more than eight hundred square feet.
Looks like a deck, it sounds like a deck, it must be a deck.
Right, something like that. I, I thought, when I read this, this was trying to influence, maybe not, I don't even know if it's legal, the assessors, but I may...
No, actually, no. It wasn't, there was no intent for that because, like I said, there's two separate and distinct characteristics between it.
So then why not just get rid of the eight hundred? I, I don't, if you have testimony, you have people that are ready, ready to testi- testify. Why go through all this when all you had to do is go back to the same thing?
It's to go ahead and actually put it in place to give the tools to the zoning board to understand that there is a difference between family and not.
Well, now we're back to family.
So, I mean, thi- this, I felt, was a alternative, um, looking at it from a different point of view. All right? And, uh, that's, that was the point, is looking at it to go along with chapter forty-eight, section three, where zoning cannot regulate the interior of a single family home. All right? And having two kitchens in your house should not be regulated. All right? To have your family or in-laws live with you, or your aunt or uncle, or cousin, niece, or nephew, uh, that you shouldn't be regulated. Uh, to live with you, who's gonna live with you, and also what you wanna have on the inside of your house. Like your house is your castle.
But you are regulating who lives with you.
No.
In your definition of family, you sure do.
Anyone by blood, marriage, or adoption.
Right. That limits who can live with you.
And that's the cornerstone of our foundation, our father-fathers.
Okay.
And as this one here, it actually, because in the first definition that I gave you for family there, it sets out three different categories. And what this is doing is this is one category was the foundation of our family values in our country.
Uh, does anybody have any further questions? Uh, should we, can we, uh?
Public, it's a public hearing.
Yeah, um, okay, yeah.
Maybe Dom has something.
Anyone out in the...
I don't know if there's anybody, since this is a public hearing, uh, there are a couple of people out there. If, uh, anybody has anything to, uh, that would like to say? Seeing no one coming forward, uh, can we, uh, continue this? And then have the, as we discussed, have it looked at legally and have it looked, uh, at by the building commissioner and, uh, maybe the assessors?
I'm gonna suggest you continue it to May twenty-first, it's seven-twenty.
You wanna do them individual, all of them? 'Cause marijuana moratorium?
Oh.
You wanna do all of them and then we can either continue all of them till the twenty-first or whatever the date was?
Okay, it's up to you.
That'd be my suggestion.
Oh, that's right, we haven't heard the medical marijuana.
Oh, yeah.
I apologize, Will.
Yeah, yeah.
You want me to talk about that?
Please.
Um, I was...
Okay, yeah.
I was approached by the police chief, um, about, um, addressing, um, the upcoming, um, regulations on medical marijuana, medical centers. As you know, the, uh, the voters approved it. The DPH, Department of Public Health, has issued rules and regulations. Those rules and regulations have gone around and they've, um, had public hearings throughout the state on that. And I believe any day now, they're gonna come out with their final regulations. And in a sense, they're saying there, there shall be, and this may be reduced, thirty-five, no more than thirty-five in the state, no more than five per county, and they must be run by nonprofits. Most communities now are trying to deal with this from a zoning perspective. Wait, the town of Wakefield tried to prohibit them completely and the AG kicked it out and said, "You can't do that." That was not the intent of the voters. Uh, so I am, eh, and working with, um, the selectmen and the police chief, and I talked to Bruce, we've now have an article for town meeting to place a moratorium on this for a little more than a year, till June thirtieth of two thousand fourteen. I know you've asked me to reach out to different department heads and boards and commissions to form a committee if this is adopted so that you can, um, establish some healthy, um, uh, bylaw to regulate it. So, this is the, the moratorium bylaw. It's been vetted by town council. And I know Mrs. Hanlon has done much more research on this than I have.
Okay, I will read the purpose of, uh, this public meeting. Is to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by adding a new section forty-nine fifty, temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers. That would provide as follows, and further to amend the table of contents to add section forty-nine fifty, temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers. Some of the proposed changes to the town land use ordinance by forming a subcommittee are as follows. A, subcommittee proposing a initial application fee and a renewal fee for cultivation facilities. B, plans to address dispensary rules in more depth. C, law is so vague and poorly written, a lot depends on local ordinance. Basically, four uses regarding medical marijuana. One is the patient, two is the caregiver, the latter of which can grow and provide plants for five patients. Neither of these can be touched by zoning ordinances. We never get to know the user or the actual caregiver, that is all confidential. The only people that get to know them is, um, the state, three and four. The other two uses, however, are what the moratorium will temporarily halt. The first is... The first is a dispensary or compassion center, which is an establishment that can, that can provide or sell marijuana to users. The other is centers that don't necessarily provide marijuana, but instead allow users to socialize, educate themselves and buy products related to medical marijuana. Some of the other additional things are, one, analyze the town's existing ordinances and recommend amendments aimed at protecting the town from effects including a shortage or of our excessive burden on public facilities or services. Within this case, police coverage. Cover has only fifteen sworn-in full-time police officers who currently cannot provide twenty-four-hour coverage. Three, we need some headway in tightening up land use rules and regulations. Four, among the provisions, officials are considering the definition. A fee schedule, amendments to the land use table and performance standards according to the notice issued. Five, the law needs to include the creations of nonprofit, government-sanctioned clinics and marijuana cultivation centers. Six, third-party based operation like in California, based Berkeley Patient Group, group, medical marijuana to run clinics. And seven, location, developing a marijuana cultivation facility. And eight, the town enacted a moratorium so medical marijuana cultivation guidelines could be crafted, including the proposed fee and other rules. So that's just some of the research that I was able to share tonight. I have tons and tons of it. It would take me hours to review everything here tonight about this new medical marijuana. But I think it's extremely important that we get a sub together, put together, and that we get this temporary moratorium at least until, over here you have June third.
Yeah, this is an older one. It's June thirtieth.
It's June thirtieth of two thousand and fourteen. And I know you spoke about Wakefield where they tried to stop it completely in the Attorney General?
Yep.
Said, "No way." However, they did allow Burlington a moratorium, along with other towns now following. So I really wanna get moving on this, so we're not caught. Because like you said, there's gonna be five per county. So they can really go anywhere in the county. You cannot stop it. So we really need to get work and get a subcommittee together and work on getting these bylaws. And I think I worked with you and Bruce and we suggested we were gonna ask the police chief, the selectmen, the board of health.
Ag commission.
A commission.
I've reached out to all them. The police chief has agreed. I haven't heard from the other three.
There was one.
Was there somebody else?
Other one?
There was a list. I don't have it.
I have a list. And I was gonna just quickly mention to you, what about if I meet with the superintendent of schools just to see if she has any insight or any ideas? And that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Bob. Through the chair.
All right, we have, and I've brought this up in the past, is that we have a adults district to, so I think that maybe possibly, if we're going to do something that, slide it with that, as long as you have an area for it, that's what should be. I think that part of it is you're talking about the police chief, which is perfect. Superintendent of school, I don't understand, she's not a town resident here? But not one person said anything about residents being part of the committee.
She's not a resident here, however, she is a superintendent of schools and she deals with a lot of schools and a lot of towns and cities. And I just wanted to see if she had any input, just to add.
They're not setting a committee yet. They're gonna see what town meeting does first.
Well, I, I think we could, I, I think you should start a committee now for this, either through the selectmen or whatnot, to get a heads up on it, to start this ball rolling here. Just for the fact that, for waiting for town meeting. If this comes into play and somebody comes into town right now, and I'm gonna put a perfect example is the solar bylaw went, and what happens if you get this group of people to get a bylaw together and it doesn't get passed at town meeting and then it goes past that sixty-day? Are we gonna now get inundated by the Attorney General's office that this isn't getting passed? There's too much confusion about it or whatnot? So, I mean, I think we, if we handle it the same way we do with the adult district, that we do have a district for it, this is where it is, cause it's very similar, what you're looking at, doing. If they're saying we can't stop it totally from our town, then, but we can give certain areas that we do have a place for it.
I, if I may mislead, I think that's what the subcommittee will research.
Yeah, we'll look at that.
The good news is that zoning, assuming the moratorium passes town meeting, and I've heard no one say they would vote against or was against it. No one can get a permit for this now because the first advertisement's already been published, so you're protected, the town's protected, assuming it passes. If it fails, well, we wouldn't be protected anyway, I guess.
I, I believe I asked to have the building inspector also on.
Oh, that was it. I did ask the building inspector. We don't have one right now. I believe someone's gonna be appointed tomorrow, but.
So I, I think that inviting the public to this, making sure that there's somebody from the general public.
Well, it is a public meeting, so it is open to the public.
Right, but I'm asking for somebody from the public to be part of this committee for the fact that there should be people from Self-Metal Village, from the senior, or from Cranberry Village, or Pine Tree Village, that these are highly, are Crystal Lake area, of getting more input from the actual public. Where it's government-based here, that we're only gonna include our government people that are gonna draft this, that maybe other people have different ideas and values that are part of it, so you get different opinions and it's not one-sided. All right, and I understand if you're gonna have public hearings or let people have meetings or whatnot to go along, that's great. But I think you need to have that representation from the general population. I think we, we can discuss that at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
Formation of the committee. All right, so did we, yeah, we, we did set a date. We had a motion.
Nope.
And it's, no, we haven't. We haven't set a date. Is there anybody else out there that would like to speak about the medical marijuana issue? Seeing no one.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment changes to, what'd you say, the twenty-first, Jack, is that the meeting?
Seven-twenty.
Twenty-first at seven-twenty.
Have a motion to a hear a second?
Second.
Motion to second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. All right, so, oh, next is the public hearing, proposed zoning map amendment for Federal Road.
Yes, I'm gonna ask you to continue that. Town council found a glitch in the public hearing notice for this. It was a, I, I didn't put the word portion and it's only a portion of the map, so I re-advertised for the twenty-first. So I'd like you to continue this to the twenty-first at seven-thirty.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for South Coastal Development.
Nope.
Oh, excuse me. Where am I?
Proposed zoning.
Proposed zoning, excuse me, for federal furnace, the twenty-first at seven-thirty.
Second.
Sorry about that. I jumped ahead.
Have a motion and second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we have a seven forty-five public hearing for South Coast Development, three oh-three Tremont Street, special permit and site plan review for a gas station, drive-through restaurant.
You'll see in your packet, they'd also like a continuance until May twenty-first. I can give you some good news though, that they have gone in front of, as you know, after the site visit, they were really holding everything until they had their hearing with Conservation Commission to see if they could get some variances or weavers on the waterfront district, the water protection area. And they have received those, so now they're redrafting their plans. They plan on going to the Conservation Commission on the fifteenth and hopefully getting approval. And then on the twenty-first, we'll have revised plans. I'll make sure the fire department has them, because if you remember, public safety was an issue. And I'll make sure that Fussin O'Neill has them as well. So they're asking for a continuance. I'm gonna suggest seven forty-five.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for South Coastal Development to the twenty-first of May at seven forty-five.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we have a, at eight o'clock, we have a public hearing continuance for the Norfolk Power Equipment. It's forty-five and forty-seven North Main Street. Special permit and site plan review for retail outdoor display.
I got three things. Two things in your packet is a photometrics diagram that was requested and there is a schematic of the building in the colors for it. They've addressed all issues. I did talk to the fire chief. The only outstanding issue I had was whether the fire department was going to approve the cistern. And I received notice today that they have approved the thirty thousand gallon cistern. So I believe Mr. Morris is here to update you.
Good evening, Mr. Morris.
Good evening. Again, Gregory Morris, Morris Engineering, representing the applicant Norfolk Power. I think Jack sums it up pretty well here. All of the outstanding items that Fussin and O'Neill had commented on previously have been addressed. Fussin O'Neill did write a memo.
Oh, I forgot to give him that.
Dated May first, which had four items on it. We've addressed those four items. Conservation Commission met last week and approved this project. Since our last meeting, you had your site walk on the site. We provided the revised photometric plan and we provided the revised, you know, architectural detail plans that were requested at your last meeting. So I believe we've addressed all outstanding items. Again, I'll turn it over if there's anything further to discuss here.
Does anybody have any further questions?
Do you have the color rendering photograph?
That's in your packet?
Well, I just have a black.
Now, well, he's gonna explain that this, I asked the same question. This is technically the color rendering. It's gonna be a gray, a shade of gray.
I made it convenient.
I, I called Jeff, his associate, and said, "Jeff, I love the color rendering, but there's no color other than the windows."
We called the architect and said the same thing, and he says it's a, it's a gray building. It's light gray and dark gray. So this is the color rendering that they have provided to us. Materials, you see the masonry with the windows on the front facade here, looking at the building, and then the side here and the rear, that's the corrugated metal, you know, building. Typical, this is the same style metal building as right next door to the north of the site.
Very nice. Anybody have anything else?
I have one thing, Mr. Chairman. I know Mr. Fernandez is here, who's in a butter, and I talked to Dom and he didn't get his, you know, with the certified mails, I guess he didn't get it until after the first hearing, but he is here. I don't know if you have any comments, Dom? I wanted to, wanted to make sure that you got heard.
Yeah, I mean, I really don't have any concerns.
Dom, you don't have to come up and use the phone for the microphone.
I've worked with Dom on a lot of projects and I wanted to make sure he had a voice here.
Yeah, but my only concern was that I did not.
What do we have your name, your name, please?
Domingo Fernandez, forty-three North Main Street.
Thank you.
I sit directly south of this project. And my only concern was that I did not get the notice until after the last meeting. And I thought maybe because the mailing got sent to my mother's house and I got it late. But then I understand that Brian also didn't get his notice until the day after, so that's why we weren't at the first meeting. But since then, I've been to the town hall. I have actually seen the site plan review and the owners of the property. I've met with them today with the most, the latest plan. And I really don't have any concerns. I think you guys have covered it. We talked a little bit about buffering and maybe doing something to enhance the buffer, but they, they're more than willing to, to work with me if anything comes up, so. Essentially, I think, I think it's all pretty much covered, so.
Could you talk, could you talk a little bit about the buffer in between the proposed project and Dom's property, please? What you guys are proposing to do there so the people at home will understand what you guys are doing for buffering and landscaping?
Sure, so there's, there's two plans here that really show what we're proposing for a buffer. Sheet three of the plan set shows the existing tree line along that southern property line. And none of our proposed work touches any of that tree line. We're maintaining that tree line that's already there. So we're not taking down any vegetation between our property and the property to the south. Furthermore, sheet L-one, which is the landscape plan, shows that, again, we're maintaining the existing trees, but the areas outside of the existing vegetation, between that and the proposed parking lot, we are proposing additional vegetation there. A couple of trees, shrubs, and then a grass mix, just as the ground cover over it. So we're maintaining the buffer that's there and then adding shrubs and adding a tree as well.
So you're not removing anything that was, was there and you, so you're just adding?
Not removing a single thing.
So is that?
Yes, I, I own up to, there's, there's a crest, so there's a natural buffer there. They've assured me that none of the trees are coming down. And there's a spot there, there's a sort of a valley that basically looks into the side of my house. So I, having not seen the building, I was concerned that possibly that lighting and everything would be coming right across, but that shouldn't be the case. And if it is, we can do something with maybe some small shrubs or something that will cover that spot.
Dom, have you looked at the photometric plan?
I saw it to, well, I saw plans today. I'm not sure what the.
You have that, William, quick?
Yeah, so there's, there's two plans. The photometric plan, which shows light cutout at all of the property lines.
Yep.
I'll flip to that in just a minute.
And it shows how it dies off even before it gets to the crest, to the tree line.
Correct. The other thing I wanna point out on the grading plan, which is sheet four, our parking lot here is at elevation one fifteen. The bill, the building itself is at elevation one twenty-one. This crest between the properties, you'll see that there's a high point along the property line at one twenty-five. So our, our parking lot, you know, and any headlights associated with it are significantly lower than that crest along the property line, but.
And that's the, the land crest, not the tree crest.
Correct, correct. So then the photometric plan as well, again, will confirm that there's gonna be light cutout. We, we didn't analyze over to the lot line, but we analyzed approximately twenty feet off the edge of pavement because we have our pavement well onto the subject site. And those, those values are all relatively low, close to zero, zero point one.
I just think it was important that people at home understand that how it's gonna cut out and drop off there, so. And I think the landscaping's really good, so. I like the project. Those were my comments. Anybody else on the board have anything, any questions?
I don't, as long, are you satisfied with what's?
I, I, I think it's an attractive building and I think my concerns have been met, so I'm satisfied.
What about this gentleman?
Anybody else?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody else that would like to speak, please come up and...
I'll ask a question. Is there gonna be limitations of when deliveries can be made there, different times of the night or whatnot? Just because of going in and out, or coming in really early, and I was just, I didn't hear that. I wasn't here at the first meeting, so I didn't know if that was ever brought up.
No, it wasn't.
No, yeah.
There's no butters at the first, when no one's complained. You know, with, with deliveries, you gotta, they gotta be allowed to compete, you know? You can't limit them. Do you have any idea what the hours are, what, what?
I mean, they're, they're open, typical business hours during the day. I expect that they'd get, you know, deliveries, say, from six AM to eight PM.
I mean, this is a commercial area.
I don't, I don't see any overnight deliveries coming in, but it's nothing that I've discussed with them.
Do you have any problems with that, the neighbors?
No, I, I mean, I spoke with the owners today, and they assured me that it was eight PM.
Okay.
Okay.
So, everything would...
Six to eight PM?
We'll do as a condition.
Okay. Yeah, we're good. I think we're done.
Mr. Chair, before I make a motion, I think this is a great mix for Main Street. I think it works hand in hand with a joint property, the Kelleher Building. I think it's, falls into a lot of what we're trying to do on the master plan. It's a good mix. It's good, good for the area and good for the town. Seeing that being said, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we wanna talk about some conditions?
The only one I've heard is the deliveries. It's, they've done a very, you know, we're very used to Morse now, 'cause he did the Kelleher Building, we... But they do a very good job, I'm very impressed with, with their...
Yes, they do.
...benearing and thoroughness, and when you can get Sean Martin down to zero conditions after two hearings, you're doing a good job. I have nothing other than our usual conditions and deliveries. Six AM to eight PM.
We didn't put conditions on the other, the other building?
Other building next door.
There were no delivery conditions, it never came up.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Well, seeing that that's, that's, nobody has anything else, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site, the special permit for Norfolk Power Equipment with our standard conditions. Seeing that there's no issue with the delivery times, Mr. Fernandez says he talked with the owner, so I don't think that we need to add that. That should be it.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck, guys.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. I know the owner was excited to be here, and, thank you. This board's always great. Your town plan is great. Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good project, thank you.
You had to say that after what I said.
Geez, you're getting a lot of compliments tonight, a couple from Bob Melvin.
Having the technical review meeting that this town has is very beneficial to us as an applicant. It really is a model. No other towns do that, and it relieves a lot of frustration on our side of the board. So, the tech, the technical review committee meeting is spectacular.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, when I first got here, they, they had technical review committees, but they never had the applicant there. So, they couldn't get any answers to their questions.
So, no other, no other town does that, that you've...
Like, like Jack just said, maybe they do it internally, but we're never there as, as part of the applicant, and so you go in front of the planning board, and then the planning board wants one thing, conservation wants that. There's no correspondence between the town boards. This way, everyone sits at one table, and get everything out in the open. It's, it's awesome.
And, and, you know...
Good to hear. Thank you.
And most of the time it works, but there's been times when the applicant walks away. It's just, they realize it's too much, whatever that is.
But it's good to know that at the beginning.
Yeah.
Instead of doing a lot of work and then...
Spending a lot of money.
And spend a lot of money, then have it shot down in the end.
Exactly.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, we go on to other business. Planning board notes.
Oh, I put these three things on here, and you see in your packet, the, if you recall, Kingsbury Hollow, you have a cash surety, and if you remember, they gotta come to you every year, and if they build more lots, they can reduce it. They haven't built any lots, so you're ju- I just put that they wish to continue it for another year. You don't need to do anything. I just wanted you to see that. The next one is the covenant. This is Marion Drive. I am very happy to say that the lot in front of SLT was sold, or they're under agreement with what they call CPS, which is the Agway Company, which is currently on Plymouth Street. They need to get Marion Drive accepted in order for that agreement to go through, and because you hold a covenant on that lot. And so, this Saturday, they're going to pave it. Sean Martin will be there, Billy Hallianen, to inspect it, and I've scheduled a public hearing for the twenty-first for road acceptance, and hopefully on June third, town meeting will accept it. There's a dual purpose here, and we're hoping to use Marion Drive for Deekus's off-site use of water through the fire hydrant. So, once the road's accepted, we don't have to deal with any legalities that way about going on private property. So, this is all good stuff. So, I just want you to know that I did put Marion Drive, I've advertised, I've notified the two butters, or Will, which are the two brothers, and, and it will be on the warrant for town meeting. And then the third thing, you signed already, and it's a little convoluted, but you've already signed the third thing, I don't think it's in here, is the covenant, I mean, the deed of restrictions for Sampson's Pond. One of your conditions was that the owner of, well, the applicant, Mr. Delapiscoli, and the residents agree on the deed of restrictions they have. I had three members, the first three showed up in the office today, get that notarized, and then that will be recorded, and that deed will be, be set. So, that's what I got for plan. I put it under, it should've been under planner notes, but...
Well, thank you. Planner's notes.
Um, I'm good.
Go on to the...
Glad you'd like that.
The approval of the minutes of April sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Have a motion to approve in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very well done. I liked the minutes.
All right. Correspondents.
I got two things in here. One, I gave you the, a notice of appeal on the building commissioner's cease and desist on Rocky Metal Development. I know they're having a hearing on May twenty-third. I have no idea what's gonna happen there. Oh, then the last thing, I wanted to ask you, this is the Dunkin' Donuts that's being built at Montello Street. And if you see where the circle in X is, that's the approved location of the dumpster. And they would like to move that dumpster to that corner location. It will be screened exactly the way proposed, and it's on impervious surface as well. It's, and part of the reason is because that stamped concrete came out so well, they wanna keep it as a patio for outdoor coffee and stuff, and they don't wanna have a dumpster there, and they hadn't thought that out well enough. I didn't think they needed to do much with this, but it, I, I wanted to show you and get your direction.
Do I have a copy of that, or maybe I...
Should be in court, okay? Jay.
Oh, okay, I see it.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's far, far enough away from the stacking lane. I don't think that's gonna become an issue. I do like it away from the building. I do like the idea of the patio there where people can sit out there and enjoy. I mean, I think that's gonna be a beautiful building. I...
Looks nice now.
Really, really like it. It's a nice cornerstone coming in off the off-ramps. A really, really nice job, Mr. Cadet, done there, so I don't have a problem with it.
No.
I mean...
It's actually better over there. It is, yeah. It's, it's not right off the highway, it's, it's further back. No, I have no problem.
All right. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the only thing I had was, last night, we had a redevelopment authority meeting, and our secretary, Mr. Melvin, had brought up some issues with just concerns about how to register the minutes when they're approved, and the time and date, and also when, they're also posted. They should be timed and dated. The time is the issue. And I'd just like to have in the record for our approval of the minutes of April sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, that they were approved today, the seventh of May, at eight twenty-seven PM. I think that's important. Bob made, explained that to us last night.
Yeah, I, I have a, I was at that meeting. I have a note. Bob said the Attorney General has come up with that this needs to be done, and currently, now we're doing all our posting and our recording electronically, and there's no date stamp on there. Every time before, I just go and date stamp it, it's automatic. So, I think the website committee's gonna have to come up with a way to do that electronically, so we don't have to. But right now, we're gonna have to put that in there sometime.
In the minutes, I saw.
We'll have to talk about it. We'll work that out. Everybody's gonna have to work that out.
Yeah. Moving towards the new electronic. And the other thing, and I, I do apologize, Mr. Chad, I would like to still move forward on trying to do a lot of things via electronic. I know a lot of us have iPads and stuff like that, but keep printing, maybe back to papers and documents.
It was wild.
It gets a little bit much, and maybe we can start to move towards that end. It might be a little bit of a learning curve, try to get there, and, you know, obviously, all of us are not equipped with it, but I'd like to see us at least try to trend towards that end. I think it might be a little bit helpful, especially like maybe correspondence, stuff like that. I don't know how we're gonna get there, but I just think we'd like to try to.
Some of the more well-off communities, they buy their boards iPads. I mean, they're not your personal iPads.
Right.
And you sit there with an iPad. I have it on the screen. Maybe we make copies for the public, obviously, and you do it electronically.
How does that work? Do you bring that iPad home with you?
I assume you do, yeah, yeah.
Boy, that would, that would be great, if someday we could, uh...
And then Kathy...
Do something like that.
You know, I misjudge. It's my fault that the copying wasn't done. I misjudged the timing, and it was too much, too much information.
I just think that if we can move forward on the, on the ideas and concepts of trying to get that accomplished, I think it'd be a little bit better. I know Chad brings his all the time, and...
I, you used to.
Yeah, it's dead. I burned it out by about three o'clock today, so, anyways, that's my thoughts.
Thank you. And, and just before we, we go for adjournment, I'd just like to say, I did see the Local Housing Partnership, CCAT program, explaining the need, and it's, it's running during the week, and explaining the need for, to rehab some of the abandoned homes, some of the plans that the Local Housing Partnership has to help some of the homes that have been abandoned and foreclosed on. So, it, if anybody has an opportunity at home to watch that program, 'cause this is gonna go before town meeting, it would be good to get that information.
Very good.
And I guess we could go for adjournment. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night.